So with that, Madam Plurk, call the roll please.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Gault.
Present.
Commissioner Kayler.
Present.
Commissioner Watkins.
Present.
Mayor Paxton.
Present. We had Reverend Henderson coming to give the invocation. He might have misunderstood when the meeting starts, so we'll go ahead and ask Commissioner Watkins to give the invocation and Commissioner Kayler to do the pledge of allegiance, please.
Well, I'm no Brother Ray Henderson, but I'll...[42.12][42.12](laughing) He can preach and pray. Shall we pray? Father, God, as we come to you in prayer, Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity that we can come to you in prayer and you do listen to our prayers. You love us. You came to this earth and died for us, your son, and that's what we just celebrated, the birth of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. And we just thank you for the opportunity to live for you and serve you. Thank you for this great community we live in, the people here, and how you continue to bless us personally and as a community and as a nation. And so we thank you for that. We thank you for all good things that come from above. Just thank you for this mayor and commission, city manager, and all the employees of the City of Paducah and the great job they do. Forgive us where we fail. You give us a great year in 2012 for Paducah, make it that shining city on a hill. We'll give you the thanks forever in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good job, Commissioner Watkins.
Thanks, sir.
For the moment. Okay. Mr. City Manager, any additions or deletions?
There are none.
All right. We have tried to have people come to our meetings for presentations, and tonight we ask John Hodges from the Joint Sewer Agency to come and give us an update. So, Mr. Hodges, it's good to have you with us tonight.
How are you?
Good.
Let me see. I knew I was supposed to pitch blank. I figured it out right there. I think the last time I came before the commission was in late 2010, and I had a chance a couple of weeks ago to have a little update meeting with the city manager, and I wanted to come tonight and just update the commission with where we are at the sewer agency and what we've got going on. So I've got a few slides to talk from, and I'll try to be...I can get to engineering mode, so if I do, then you guys can just do the circle wave and I'll pick up the pace. But of course, you guys know, the Joint Sewer Agency, we were formed in 1999 and with the mission per our ordinance to own, maintain, control, and operate the regional comprehensive wastewater facilities within McCracken County. I'm an engineer. I don't really do mission statements. I'm kind of pretty simple, but my board chairman asked me one day what our goals were, and I gave him these three right here. And our board has embraced those. We want to provide for a reliable sewer system. That's getting it from point A to point B. We want to achieve and maintain regulatory compliance, which is a lot more difficult than it usually seems. And we want to provide for responsible expansion into unsewer areas. And that's really honestly within the city and the county. There were a few areas within the city that were not sewered. And so our biggest thing that we've got going on, our plate, it's been that way since 2007, is our consent judgment. We signed it in September of 2007. It deals with combined sewer overflows and sanitary sewer overflows. Combined sewer overflows are a term that's pretty hard for people to understand, but believe it or not, Paducah was incorporated and developed prior to sanitary sewer treatment. And so back in the day, that was back in the day when everything either went on the sidewalk or went to the river. And so when they built storm sewers and sanitary sewers in Paducah, they put them in one pipe. They called them combined sewers. Then in 1959, I believe, is when the sanitary sewer treatment plant here at Paducah was built, and we had several miles, we know there's at least 40 or 50 miles of combined sewer, were built. They didn't rebuild those sewers. They put in check dams and regulators so that on dry day, a day like today, everything goes to our plant. On a wet day, it's not the case. Everything goes to our plant up to a certain point. We capture the first flush, which is the heavier of the contaminants, and then the remaining stormwater flow with the mixture of the sewage goes to the river. That's permitted, permitted to this day. EPA knows that. We report that information to them. However, in 1994, the EPA passed Clean Water Act, which says, oh, by the way, everything that we've permitted up to today is no longer legal. So you have to change it. Now, in the '90s, there were no technology to deal with this, in part because separating sewers is very complex, costly, and at times cannot be successful because you have your stormwater connections and your sanitary connections in the same pipe, in houses and buildings and everything. But in 2007, they pushed the agenda, and they want us to look at our combined sewer overflows. They also want us to look at our sanitary sewer overflows. We're the only utility that tries to keep stuff out more than keep it in. Believe it or not, your gas lines will leak, your water lines will leak, and when that happens, the product flows from inside the pipe to outside the pipe. But in the sanitary sewer world, we flow, water wants to get in, and when we get that excess water, it causes conveyance issues. And so we are always, and like I said, we look at sanitary sewer overflows. There are 17 combined sewer utilities in Kentucky. There's, you can see up there on the slide, you can get the flavor, Owensboro, Frankfurt, Henderson, mostly River towns. Overall, there's 772 combined sewer communities in the United States, and the EPA estimates 23,000 to 75,000 sanitary sewer overflows occur each year. Reason why that number is so wide, because they don't know. I mean, I don't know of any sanitary sewer utility that doesn't have separate system overflows based on a rainfall event. Nashville, you get 20 inches of rain, you cannot contain that. Cannot. We get five inches, there's always going to be a rain event that's going to cause a sanitary sewer overflow. Here's a map, the kinds that shows you where the combined sewer utilities are in the country. You can see Paducah. We're on the downstream end of the Ohio. It's primarily in the northeast. There's a few in the south, and then there's a few out there in the far west. We had three major requirements.
Why is that, John? Why is that?
No river to go to.
Okay.
And then as you go and develop farther west, you learn from the sins of your forefathers. And so primarily, that's the reason why. If you look at, if you go back into history, the northeast developed first and had more infrastructure, more urbanized, and then they had, I guess, the gold rush or far west, and everybody went from the east to the far west. And then as the west, Midwest has come in, you know, they benefit from the fact that, number one, I don't think they have the rivers like we have, but I know they have a few, but they just didn't make the decision like everyone else to put them in the same pipe. If you could get in a time machine, that's the first thing you need to tell somebody, by the way, (laugh) from a sanitary standpoint. But our consent judgment had three major requirements, early action plan and what we agreed with and every other utility agreed with in Kentucky. Of course, Kentucky, all the Kentucky CSO utilities and essentially all 700 CSO utilities are in a consent judgment with either the EPA or their respective state. We agreed that we would do some capital improvement projects in the interim between the time that we signed the judgment to the time that we turn in our two major plans that you'll see at the bottom two bullets, the sanitary sewer overflow plan and the long-term control plan. The SSOP addresses separate sanitary sewer issues, and the long-term control plan, the LTCP, deals with your combined sewer network. So in between March and September of 2010 and when we signed it in September of 2007, you have a couple-year period, and we both agreed there'd be some actions that we would do from an early action plan standpoint. I'm going to talk tonight just about the capital improvement projects. We did have some planning documents and some things we had to do, but the money that we spent, the big money, was right here on the board. And per the agreement with them and our consent judgment, all of this work was to be completed by June of 2010. Of course, we made all those dates. They wanted us to complete the Woodlawn Interceptor. The Woodlawn district is in Farley, and they had no real interceptor in their whole separate system. We had built two phases of this, and we built the third phase. It was $900,000. We wanted to increase the wet weather capacity at the Paducah plant. That's where all the combined sewer flow goes to, from nine million gallons a day to 18 million gallons a day. We did that. We did that a year ahead of schedule, $4.5 million. That takes out about 750 million gallons a year of combined stormwater and sanitary flow and treats it additional. Not a bad bang for the buck for $4.5 million. The other thing that we did, separate Perkins Creek Interceptor from the combined sewer network. Perkins Creek Interceptor, we name all our interceptors by creeks. We name all our pump stations by the road that they're by. We live in western Kentucky. That's just what we do. And the Perkins Creek Interceptor actually drains everything west of I-24. And so, in lures. So all of Lone Oak, all of the Paducah area that's west of I-24 goes to Perkins Creek, and it's all separate system. And what was happening is Perkins Creek then pumped into the combined sewer system. So we made Perkins Creek Interceptor, the pump station, bigger, and we direct pumped it to the treatment plant. And that took out a third of the pollutant load in the combined sewer system with that one job at 2.3 million bucks. Then we agreed with the state and the fact that we wanted, we already had scheduled up some rehabilitation projects. We included those in the early action plan. That was 1.2 million. We actually only agreed to do 300,000 a year, and we did 600,000. And of course, Basil will tell you that, I talked to him today, and he says, John, nobody knows what rehabilitation means. You talk in engineering language that no one else besides down there at Northview knows. I'll talk a little bit about what rehabilitation is here in just a minute. But the total cost of the plan, the early action plan, was 10.2 million. We were fortunate in the fact that at that time, they were doing water wastewater bonding at the state level, and we got $6.1 million and applied it to it. The loan that we took out at KIA was at a 2% interest rate, which is a pretty good interest rate. Of course, that's from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, and we had to use about $2.5 million in cash. So really, we did, what is that, 4.1 million of our own to get 10.2 done. And hopefully, if the, hopefully, they'll do some more water wastewater bonding here this January. We'll see. So now we know, we've turned in our plans. We know there's some things that we're going to have to do. We know we need to continue with what we call investigation and rehabilitation. We need to perform more rehab annually than we performed in 2006 through 2009, and we need to concentrate that rehabilitation to remove what we call infiltration and inflow. You've got two different types of water that tries to get in your sanitary system. Infiltration is through leaks through the groundwater, and inflow is through like somebody putting a downspout gutter straight to the sanitary. And so they call that INI. So we know we need to do that. We also know that we need to build the Massett Creek Interceptor, both Phase 1 and Phase 2. I'll talk about those two projects here in a little bit. We also know there's some pumping and line size, potential storage improvements that we need to do, and we're working on those. And in our combined sewer outfalls, our combined sewer system, we know the fact that the whole driver for the EPA is not what goes on in Paducah. It's what goes on in the Gulf. And so they look to have not only the, and I'll tell you this, in one day, they'll want all the stormwater treated, whether it be in a combined sewer or not. And so we're the first target for that. We have gone to several conferences at the invitation of the EPA, and they will tell you that that's what they want. And so Paducah is a big, we transport a lot of stormwater as a sanitary utility, probably top three in the state. You've got Louisville, you've got the three counties, Boone, Kenton, and Campbell, which is SD-1, and then I would say we're probably third. Now, it's not our dry flow. It's not what we bill, because I only bill 60% of what Owensboro bills, but it's what we have to transport. And so we know that we've got some in-treatment that we may have to do at some CSO locations. So now what we've done is we've turned in our plans. We turned in both our plans in 2010, and we sit here in January in 2012. And they want us to be expeditious in the work that we do. However, we have not received comments back on either plan. I take that back. We've received comments back on the one we've turned in in March of 10, and I got those last month. And so we've got this gap. You can't go out and spend a lot of money on things you don't know they won't approve. So you can only do what we know makes sense. So we're going to perform rehabilitation. We know that's a good way to, a good investment. We're going to pursue the completion of the Massett Creek Interceptor. We're going to perform projects within our submitted plans that benefit Paducah and McCracken County. I'm not as worried about the Gulf as I am about Paducah and McCracken County. And then we're going to look to do some separation projects. That separates the combined sewer in the, separates the combined sewer into storm and sanitary pipes, which are affordable and that can provide a direct benefit to us. And we're going to talk a little bit about that here in just a sec. So when I talk about rehabilitation, rehabilitation is actually taking a sewer line, which essentially all of our, not all of ours, but there's a portion of ours that you would say is at the design life of the sewer, and you line it with plastic, replace it with a dig-and-replace. You do something to make it new, give it a new design life. EPA, and I agree with this, the EPA recommends performing rehabilitation on 1% to 2% of your system manually. For us, that would be 18,000 linear feet a year, and I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with that at all. I've seen the benefits of what the rehabilitation that we've done, and I think it's a good thing. But in the compliance time that we are, we have to accelerate our efforts in that. 2010, we did 32,000 feet of what we call cured-in-place pipe. That's trenchless. That's sticking in, a felt liner, it's impregnated with chemicals, and it actually makes the plastic line within the original clay line of the sewer. I've got a picture I can show you. This year in 2011, we did 48,000 feet, $2 million. Normally, before then, from like '06, when I got there, Doug Moore and I pretty well started doing it, we would do about 12,000 feet a year. That was about $500,000. But I do agree with the 1% to 2%.
Putting that liner in, does that, is that protected from deteriorating on the outside?
Yeah. What you end up doing, if you look, you can see the top three pictures. These are pictures from our sewer system. The top two on the left are actually sewer main pipes. You've got two, three different things. You can have problems with your sewer pipes. You can have roots that grow in. That's minor roots that can essentially block the main, and your mains can crack and deteriorate and collapse. Then the two on the right, the top and the bottom, are where the connections that come into the main. You can see that they can break to a point where I have to dig them. It's on the top. Then you can see at the point at the bottom here, where that sewer line, actually, you can, you can line that and not have to dig a hole either in the street. We can, we can do something underground, trenchless. The bottom left is a sewer pipe that's in Paducah that we lined. And what that is, is a seamless plastic pipe that doesn't rely on the clay line that we lined. It's totally structure-free of the clay pipe. So if the clay pipe's totally collapsed, or not totally, but totally broken to everything, it doesn't matter. The thickness of that line is designed to be an individual pipe. You could go dig it up and chip all the clay away, put dirt back on it, and it's good to go. In addition, you don't have any joints. You have nowhere for roots to come in except at the services. The bottom picture in the middle is a service lateral that we lined trenchless. We went in with a robot, and we put a liner up the lateral a few feet. And we can actually do that at about half the cost of what it takes to dig one. Now, you can't always do that. Get the upper right corner there, that one has to be dug up. So this, when we talk about rehabilitation, this is the money that we're spending in addition to repairing manholes. Manholes are a big leak issue. The brick manholes, you've got concrete joints in those, and there's no real great picture of that.
John, when you do that, does it make the pipe somewhat smaller?
Makes the pipe, actually, that liner is, if you want to consider it, it's probably about that thick. It's less than a, maybe, it's probably about a quarter of an inch. And when you take in the fact that it eliminates all the bumps, the joints, and the cracks or the roots, it actually, friction-wise, slicks it up enough to where they say there's no difference. I can tell you that the pipes that we line absolutely are better to be lined than to be left alone because your conveyance ability is much greater.
But it's hard to tell by the picture how much...
Yeah, well, essentially, it's probably...
A fourth of an inch?
Yeah. Quarter of an inch is a good number. Is a good number. Moving on from our rehab, Massett Creek Phase 1, and I've got a map here on the next part. I know I've talked about this several times. Massett Creek Intercepters, an interceptor in western McCracken County that we need to build to offload some pump stations in Lone Oak. It's also going to be a benefit to provide for maybe some expansion out there. Riverport West is a good, it's close to Riverport West. We broke that into four contracts. We're actually doing all four contracts. Total construction cost is $7.4 million. We thought it would be 10, but the economy is our friend. Everybody's hurting for work, so we got better prices. I have more funding than I need, and I'm going to be able to use some of that funding for Phase 2. But the breakout, you can see, funding roughly 8.6 million. I'm doing it with a $2 million KIA loan at 2%. We have some grant money, 1.3 million. And then I did the county portion. I broke it up so the county portion would stand alone. It would qualify for a USDA 70/30 loan. So we got 30% of it paid at grant price, which is nothing. And then it's loan interest rates 3.25%, but the debt service was better when you incorporated in the grant money. And here's a picture. The yellow line is the line, the pump station is being your far left, 6 million gallon a day capacity. It will actually, believe it or not, serve the Information Age Park. The pump station there is 6 million gallons a day. The current pump station that we have at Information Age Park will do 60 gallons a minute, and that's it. And so if Information Age Park or anything is out there to grow, we've got to do something like this anyway. This is the first phase. I need to build this first, but I really need to build the second part of this to offload the stuff in Lone Oak. But what we'll do is we'll gravity flow from Information Age Park at the bottom of the screen to the pump station and then have to pump it back to the plant. We cannot build a treatment plant out there based on division of water rules and regulations concerning raw water intakes for drinking water. But you can also see how we've got that contract broken out into several different...did that for a couple reasons. One, you can get, you get various contractors to bid on it that may not be able to bond the whole job. So I'm talking about Phase 2 now. We need to go south of Information Age Park and proceed down to Lone Oak. We are under design. We're about 75% complete with easement acquisition. It's compliance and expansion-driven, and of course, it's cheaper because you don't have to build that big fourth main, 3.8 million. And you can see it right here. You can see the purple line leaves Information Age Park at your upper right, upper left-hand corner. I'm sorry, I think I've been saying right. And you can see the yellow dots. The yellow dots are all pump stations, and they all pump uphill, and they all go to one interceptor, the Perkins Creek Interceptor. By doing this job, we can offload several of those pump stations and split the flow between the Perkins Creek Interceptor and the McCracken, and the Massett Creek Interceptor. It gives you more capacity for what you're doing. In addition, if the southern part of the county's going to expand, we got to do something because I don't have any, any capacity in south Lone Oak. They're all developer-driven. They've only built exactly what each individual subdivision needs, and there's no excess. And so we've got that second part to provide for that in the future. I'm jumping off our compliance issues a little bit. Our board still wants to do responsible expansion. We may not be able to go complete gangbusters throughout all the city and the county, but one of the areas that we're looking at and we're doing right now is Holt Road. If you go south of the mall, going toward Highway 62, a lot of that area, if you drive down Friendship Road right now between 62 and Holt Road, all the mess is us because we're putting these sewers in. But this area is not sewered. It's not got sanitary sewer. So if you're going to have commercial development or residential development out in that area, it's all septic tanks unless we do something. And we need to go into areas that have the potential to grow and get there before the urbanization does. Because once the urbanization gets there, it's way more costly for us to do it, way harder for us to get it done, and that's one reason why we're trying to get to Holt Road now. And our board wants to do these piecemeal-type projects, smaller in scale than, say, Massett Creek, but you can afford them. In other words, we can still pay for them in addition to all the other compliance work that we can do. And then, like I said, last year, we constructed 2,400 linear feet. This year, we're doing about 5,000 feet, 6,000 feet. We've done the bottom part there that's separate, the orange, the two different oranges, and now we're doing the top, the top part. The yellow line's already built. The green line's already built, and we've got the purple and the blacks left to go. Another thing that we are looking at, I mentioned our combined sewer area. You know, we convey all the stormwater or convey a lot of the stormwater. When we can, we want to separate that sewer. What you're seeing right there is a picture of Bridge Street. It's about 2,000 feet of sewer. If you look at the top of Bridge Street, that's the intersection of Bridge and Locust. There's a pawn shop there. If you go all the way down to the right-hand side where the blue line ends, that's Murco, and the big building on the very bottom right is Lowe's South Side. And that area had a little small area of sewer that was built as a storm sewer and had sanitary connections that goes into our sanitary network, and there's an outfall out there by the pawn shop. And our board agreed, and we are going to separate Bridge Street. You can do this. It's a lot less complex than the other areas of the city, and we're going to do this as a test case. We're going to learn, we're going to learn how we need to do this. Believe it or not, most people will not separate sewers. Most, and most utility organizations or the EPA will advise you to only do the small areas because of the complexity and the cost associated with doing it. And we're going to take a look at this one. We've got the funding for it, and we're going to see how it works out. But we're under, we actually have a contract that's out for bid right now, first contract of that job. It's 2,000 feet, and right now, if combined storm and sanitary pipe, we're going to build 2,000 feet of new sanitary pipe. One reason why we're doing it now is because we talked to Jim LaFever, I did, and I said, Jim, if you ever do anything at Bridge Street, let me know because I want you to pave it so I don't have to pay for it. Jim called me. We're going to pave it. So we're going to do the job now. It's going to save us money, and in the end, it's going to help them have a better road because of sewer down there. We're going to do all the work. We're going to make it better. You won't have the potholes and the things maybe from the ground sinking in. So we are going to do this in the summer of 2012. Board's approved this job. I estimate the cost at 840,000. To be honest with you, I think this will be the second separation job west of Louisville. So we'll know exactly how much it costs, but it may come in cheaper than that, but I'm always, try to be a little bit conservative, so, that's what we think. Jobs like this will make us look at what we can do in the future. There's not a whole lot of places in Paducah, believe it or not, that have small outfalls. When they built Paducah, they did it right. They, we've got big pipes, and we have big outfalls, and they're complete, it's a very complex system. And we have another one that we might be able to separate. It's much more difficult, very, very, very infant phases, infant stages of even looking at it. I don't want to get anybody's hopes up, but right over here is Wallace Park subdivision, the south part of that drawing. You can see Henning Plaza and the Kroger. That has a smaller drainage basin area. It's two to three times bigger as far as combined sewer in Bridge Street. It's a lot bigger drainage area, and I might be able to get funding for it. I'm looking at it right now. I've got to get a package to our board to review in January to see if they would be interested in maybe doing this job. We would not do this job until we did Bridge Street because you got to learn from your, learn from your easy jobs and move into your big job. But the time for me to get my funding and time for me to look at how much it might cost, I need to start doing that now, and I'm going to do that. Like I said, with Wallace Park, we're investigating the feasibility to provide that to the board. It would eliminate another combined sewer outfall. Bridge Street and this outfall will do 100 million gallons a year, maybe 150. And why I said Bridge Street, even though it's maybe only double in size, is 840, I'm thinking this is going to cost us 3 to 4 million, just because it's that much more complex of a job. Now, we've got a lot of work to do, and EPA is constantly going to be moving the line for us to do, so how do we stand financially? We did do some Build America bonding, and so I learned that our Moody rating is AA3, which is better than the United States government. Right now, we have a total projected revenue for this year of $6.8 million. Like I said, that's 60% of what Owensboro does, and we have more pumping stations and more pipe. Our operating cost projected at 4.2 million, and I have, when you count in Massett Creek Phase 1 and our Build America bonds, we have 1.27 million annual principal and interest payments, 18%. Not too bad. We're doing okay. You can see some of the jobs that we funded with loans. All of them were necessary. And our debt coverage ratio is 2.12, which is well above what our board requires, which is a 1.3. Most public utilities in Kentucky are in between 1.05 and 1.15. So we're in better shape than the average sanitary utility. Here's what I talk about. We did some Build America bonds. We did $5 million. We have to spend that money in two years. And just to give you a flavor for what we do and what we have to fund, we had to replace a 1950's bar screen. We did some rehab. We got the Holt Road expansion. You have to check your work. You have to do flow modeling and monitoring. You have to put in monitors in your system to see if what you're doing is working. We're doing some minor work like pump station rehab and blower replacement. We're rehabbing manholes. We've got the 2011 rehabilitation project, and we're gonna obviously fund Bridge Street with this. We were formed in '99. We didn't have the same rates. No district had the same rates. Lone Oak, Woodlawn, Reedland, or Paducah. We had to equalize our rates within 10 years, and we did it. We equalized at $4 per thousand. The city and the county have to approve our rates, but you authorize to our board to adjust rates annually based on the Consumer Price Index Urban. Our current rate is 422 per thousand gallons. Everything we do, we benchmark. Every policy that we do, we benchmark. So we benchmark our rates and our fees and what we charge. And here's how we stand locally. This is for 5,000 gallon usage per month. We are the blue column. We're about $21.10 or 12 cents. You can see Mayfield Electric and Water's a little bit lower at 19. And then you can see the inside Barlow Water and Sewer is 68. So we're doing pretty good locally when you benchmark us. Murray is not on there, but pretty much everybody is. The reason why Murray's not on there is because Murray has $46 million in improvements they have to do, and I know their rates are tripling. So I could make the slide, and two weeks from now, it may be different. So I just can leave them off. But I know that they're heading toward 50-plus. So we also benchmark how we do from a standpoint like throughout the Commonwealth. And here is another slide that kinda gives you the flavor of that. I tried to pick towns of similar size or if they're under a consent judgment or some sort of EPA consent decree. And you can see the asterisk show that. Lisbeth Town, $13 is a good one. And you can see Mayfield Electric and Hopkinsville. And then you can go all the way down the line to see Frankfurt and Richmond, Henderson, and how they treat inside the city versus outside the city customers. The average state monthly bill for sewer, 5,000 gallon usage is 32.65, and we're 21, 10 or 12, depending upon my math. So we're a good $10, $11 below the state average. One thing I can tell you, we've got a lot of work to do. All these utilities that you see up there, including all those utilities that you see there, one reason why Barlow's 68, they built a new treatment plant. We've all got work we gotta do. So rates are gonna go up. That's how rates do. I mean, every rate goes up, power, water, sewer, gas, you name it. But it's our goal to try to stay on the left side of the column and to benchmark what we do. We've got a lot of programs that we have to initiate. We've got a lot of work to do, but we're trying. So that's all I wanted to do, is update you on that. And I'm sorry for taking much longer than I think I was allocated, but if anybody's got any questions, I can take them.
Questions for John.
I'd just like to make a comment. I'm on the board, and John does a great job. It's well-run and very transparent, and everything's accounted for. And we go over it with a fine-tooth comb, and he's just doing a great job.
Well, I think, I think the goal of the City Commission is to have a city that has the infrastructure to attract industry, to, to help with development, both commercial and residential. And, and I think the work that JSA has done with John and Basil as their chairman and the board guarantees that Paducah's gonna be in good shape. Paducah and McCracken County's gonna be in great shape going forward with a strong infrastructure. And so as hard as it is to bring jobs into this community, we will be successful at doing that at some point. And when that happens, we're gonna have the infrastructure to handle it. So I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, well, we've had a, you know, whether you look like a genius or not in the sewer business, depends on how much it rains. We had a good year in 2010. It rained 41 inches for the year. This year's 74 inches. So, you know, this year's been pretty trying, but like what we say, we do, we work every day. Our guys work hard. Main goal is, and people always ask, remember during floods, somebody asked, "What are you doing to prepare for the flood?" Well, we prepare for that kind of stuff every day. That's how you do it. That's how you gotta do it. Because the day it rains, you can't do anything. So we appreciate the support that the city gives, and I just wanted to come and say that on behalf of our board and make sure that you guys are up to date. If you ever have any questions, please do not hesitate to call me.
Thank you very much, John.
Thank you, ma'am.
Keep up the good work. Appreciate it. Okay, last week, we had Richard Roof do an excellent job on the airport, talking about ridership and, and different things. Today, we have Jackie Jones who's gonna talk about the marketing end of it. Jackie, welcome to the City Commission.
Well, thank you very much. Commissioner, Kayla asked me to come and spend a few minutes talking to you tonight about the team approach to marketing that the airport and the Convention and Visitors Bureau do. And I'm certainly glad to do that because I know that for at least the last decade, these two organizations have understood the importance of working together to promote Paducah. It's a big, it's a big task, but together, we've done great things, and we're gonna plan great things for the future. We share quite a few of our communications. We are obviously on each other's website. We're linked to each other's site. We share our newsletter information. I know that when I send out newsletter information about the airport to our key communicators that CVB can go ahead and send that right on, and we do the same for them. We use social media sites to help each other with announcements. Another thing that we share is, some years ago, CVB put a kiosk in the airport terminal, and it's decorated with real attractive pictures of Paducah. And there's a rack area where you can put brochures. And the passengers and their guests that bring them there pick those brochures up. Well, about a year ago, CVB donated that kiosk to the airport, and they're continuing to keep the photographs up to date. And we've taken over the filling in of the brochures, and it's a real asset to let people know that what they can see and do when they're in Paducah. We have a new digital sign in the terminal, and we are using, one of the main things that we use to, on that sign, is events in Paducah. And that information is sent to us by the CVB office. They in turn have a digital sign in their office, and they do include airport news there. We have quite a few events that we help each other promote. If you are carrying liquids, gels, and aerosols under 3.4 ounces in the airport, and you forget your clear one-quart plastic zip-top bag, took me a while to learn that, we have those plastic bags available. It's part of our customer service. And several Paducah and area businesses donate so that we can purchase those bags, and CVB is one of those that does help us purchase those. Every Monday afternoon, if you come to the airport, you've probably seen us doing meet and greet. We meet the arriving passengers with a hello and a treat, and we say goodbye to the departing passengers. That's been going on for a little over eight years now, and members of Paducah Hospitality Association man that, and CVB is a member of that and participates. We have quite a few events going on at the airport. This summer, we had the Kentucky Airport Challenge, and aviators from across the state came in. And CVB provided us with bags and brochures for that event, as they have for others, like the Tuskegee Airmen exhibit. And we celebrated aviation's 100 years a few years ago. So we can always count on them to help us out with projects. They also help us really, from, let's see, I think it was about 2002, we started the Airport Advocates. And Rose Marie Steele, who's here tonight, was one of the founders of that group, and they determined what the marketing could be or should be for that campaign. And so we're proud that she was in on that, representing CVB and has helped us throughout the years. As you know, about two years ago, United Express started a service, regional jet service, from Paducah to Chicago. And the support that we've gotten from tourism has been invaluable because they have included us in their advertising, print, and other means of promoting this service, and just about all the ads that they have distributed throughout Chicago. We in turn have helped them with some of their projects and advertising with them and supporting them. Right now, we're excited because in 2012, they're gonna be using the airport travel, United Express Travel Chicago, in their quilt museum information that's coming up. And then you probably saw the SkyWest magazine, November, December issue. It featured Paducah and the airport, and CVB took out a half-page ad in that, which helped that become a reality. We're not content with what we've done. We're looking toward the future. In the next few weeks, we're gonna have a professional photo shoot at the airport, and we're gonna use the pictures from that so that we'll have professional quality photographs for us to use and also the tourism office. The brightly colored banners that are downtown that talk about this being a distinctive city, we're one of a dozen, will soon be also in the parking lot at the airport. And of course, we are one of the many gates to Paducah. So when people come out of the terminal, they'll see those banners right there. Conversations are gonna continue on how we can help each other because we do need each other to make this promotion successful. I guess, in trying to think about how to summarize all this, I could just tell you that this partnership, this team approach, didn't start yesterday, and we certainly do want it to continue in the future.
Great. Jackie, any questions for Jackie?
Just thank you for your presentation, and I'm sure that a lot of people knew the close relationship the airport and CVB have had for years, but it's always good to remind folks of that relationship. And CVB certainly does a good job with, with your marketing.
Mayor Protem Kayla serves on the board at the airport, and we appreciate the service that you give out there. Richard, any, any news on the airline from last week? Still dealing with the government, huh? Well, okay. Fair enough. Fair enough. Jackie, that was a great report. Thank you. Rose Marie, thank you, and thank tourism for your continued support. It's, it's great. Appreciate that.
Could I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes.
I should've asked while you were up here, Jackie. I'm sorry. But what are your peak months for travel and what are your dead months? Or just the peak months? What are the highest-traveled months of the year?
You can come back up, Jackie.
June and October are very good months. We are going into our non-peak month right now, January, February. So we are always looking forward to summer and early fall months. We do a survey, parking lot survey, every October to determine where our passengers live, and we choose October because no major holidays. It's a pretty good indication of what our travelers are gonna look like for the year. So June and October are some of our best.
And I guess most of your travelers come from McCracken County, or what do your results show?
About 47% are coming from McCracken County. It's interesting, though, that this survey shows that our passengers come from as far north as Williamson County in Illinois. We get a lot of traffic from Illinois. There are the border counties in Tennessee that send us passengers. So, but mainly, they do come from McCracken County.
I'm really excited about the fact that I can get from Paducah to Chicago to see my grandbaby in Richmond, Virginia with one stop. And before, when I flew to Richmond, I had to go to Cincinnati or Cleveland or Detroit. So it's much easier. And I'm not sure, you know, if people really understand how easy it is to fly out of Paducah.
It certainly is. It's all about convenience, you know, a few steps from the parking lot, short lines for the ticket counter, short lines for security. So, and I always say, we smile when we ask you to take your shoes off.
I was driving to Louisville yesterday on some Kentucky League of City business, and Lisbeth Town ran into a Paducah resident with his daughter going to Colorado Springs to check on that school. And they were driving from Paducah to Louisville to catch a plane to go to Colorado Springs. Now, they were embarrassed to see me, and I didn't make it any harder on them, but you can't tell me that they couldn't have flown from here to Chicago, from Chicago to Colorado Springs for not a whole lot more money than, than what they spent on gasoline to get to Louisville, probably gonna spend the night on the way back before they come to Paducah. So somehow, we gotta get that word out. Okay.
I think that's one of the things we really need to promote out there, is more leisure travel.
Yeah. All right. Good, two good presentations. City Major, what's going on?
How much time do you want me to take? I'm all for leisure travel. I'll say that. I enjoyed meeting with John Hodges before tonight and hearing his presentation. My, my recent experience with wastewater treatment has a whole lot more to do with what we call the content side of things than the volume of flow. Having managed two cities with beefpacking plants slaughtering five or 6,000 head of cattle a day and the effects of that on a wastewater treatment process. So there are challenges all over, and it's kinda refreshing to hear how efforts are being made to improve the collection system here because my focus in my career's been so much on the treatment side of it. A lot of things underway, and will be coming before you in upcoming weeks. We're gonna have an executive session with you next Tuesday night to talk about the start of negotiations with the AFSCME union, some things on the HR side. We hope to move the compensation study forward shortly and have a report back to you there. We're gonna have a workshop early in February on the sports complex issue and where that stands and where that, that might be headed. I know there's a lot of interest there, and we formulated a prospective phased approach to that at budget time last year. So we'll see what's happened since that time and talk about where we wanna go. Working on the PRA ordinance update. Have made some progress there and pulling some thoughts together. I, I still hope to have something before you next Tuesday night for first reading, but if not, it'll be the meeting after that for sure. I think that's all I have tonight, unless you have specific questions.
We have Lisa Thompson here from PRA. Lisa, it's good to have you with us. I know that you can go out and brag about our joint sewer capabilities when you talk to people about how great Paducah is. See, you learned something tonight.
I did.
Yeah.
You know, I just made a comment there on, Mayor mentioned the importance of, of utilities to landing jobs. I mean, my experience has certainly been that if you don't have capacity there, you can be knocked out of the ballgame really, really quick, whether it's wastewater treatment or electricity or what have you. So the kind of efforts that are underway with all of our public utilities are all part of, of the process of strengthening our position to recruit business and industry into the community as, as well as, in some instances, retain it. So that's an important point, I think, to keep in mind, is the value of those public utilities and how important it is that, that capacity be there and that service be reliable and that rates be affordable. It's all, all part of that package and all part of that effort.
I mentioned that I was in Louisville on Kentucky League of City business. They asked me to come up to do an interview with the beginning of the session for the General Assembly, and wanted to know what KLC's agenda was gonna be this year. And I said that, that it's gonna have to be to increase revenue for cities. That when you look at our retirement, is gonna go up roughly $500,000 over a two-year period, our retirement cost, our insurance cost. You've got 911 with the problems of people not using landlines, and how do you fund that? Some cities have drug problems that are creating problems with social unrest and economic development problems on having a trained workforce. And I pretty much said, "Look, the state has got to give cities a way to increase our revenue." I mean, you can't keep passing expenses like the overtime cost that we just paid for the firemen, the 911 cost, the retirement cost. You can't keep passing those on. You've got to give us a source of revenue. So I think it's important that the TV audience knows that, that KLC is working hard on that, and will continue to work for cities. hard on that, um, and will continue to work for cities. I think having, uh, Lieutenant Governor Abramson, the farmer mayor of Louisville, is gonna be a big help, uh, to, to tell the story of cities and, uh, to say how we need help. Uh, obviously, we're not in as bad a shape as a lot of cities because of our increase in, in the payroll tax several years ago, uh, which, which increased our revenue substantially, but a lot of cities throughout state are really having a difficult time. So, um, uh, this will be an interesting session, uh, in Frankfurt, and, um, I'm anxious for, um, KLC to play a part in that. Uh, any commissioner comments? Any public comments? All right, without any further ado, we are adjourned. Thank you. Hey, Cindy? Let me say something to you real quick.